Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Southfield, April 3rd, 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Banks.
Present.
Councilmember Brightwell.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Present.
Councilmember Fraser.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbott.
Present.
Council President Protim Taylor.
Here.
We have a call.
Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules and procedures for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impotent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace. By disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of a public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes, and I'd just like to remind the audience to please silence your cellphones. The first speaker is Ronald James.
Thanks for having me sign in. I'm here to address begging. I saw some family on the corner of Lasser and 12 Mile begging, looked like they camped out there. And so I called the city, I called the police, I also called the city attorney's office. She forwarded me some information. The information, which the ACLU did repeal some law, and they said that aggressive begging. Aggressive begging is one aspect. There's also something called an economic impact. What if somebody stood on all four of those corners? Okay? What is that going to do? You've got a school over there and a church that has been in this community, it has been a positive impact in this community, one of the best schools in the state, in Highland Park Baptist. And those people over there, they don't bring nothing to this community. I thought the sign said that they were migrants or immigrants. Okay? They don't pay no, they don't pay the mayor's salary, or the police chief's salary, or the police's salary. They're there, and I understand what they're saying. When they appealed, they said aggressive begging. And aggressive begging is valid concern, but so is an economic impact. And I think that this council should look at that, and it was done in 2014 by Ms. Wickowski, an attorney, and I don't know if she prepared any information to look at the other aspects of begging. But you've got a church over there, you have people who, that's a main thoroughfare, going to Birmingham, going to Country Day, going everywhere else in the area, and we got this. And it just happened, this is some recent stuff. I've been living around here for 30 years, I ain't never seen nothing like that. And I personally, I don't like it, I take offense to it as a taxpayer, I take offense to it, and I think that the idea that whenever a community becomes black, that's the first thing that happens. Look what happened to Detroit, from Houston Street to Uptown, from Uptown to northwest Detroit, Highland Park, Highland Park, okay? When you get these negative impacts, these negative economic impacts, this is what happens. And the thing about it is, we never address it, and especially blacks. And all you've got to do is look at Detroit, what happened under Coleman Young. He drug Detroit down, and then Southfield is on its way. If y'all don't do something about this.
Thank you. Does our attorney want to comment, since it seems like you've had a conversation?
Yes, good evening. The only thing I would say, I did instruct Mr. Robinson to come here and to voice his concerns, and I did send him the applicable local ordinance that was amended in 2014 after the ACLU lawsuit was brought, and then the court sided with them based on First Amendment constitutional rights of those that have signs, you know, soliciting. And I can, I don't know if I forwarded that email when I sent it to him, but I wanted him to see what was the applicable statutes, laws, ordinances, everything that happened in 2014. But I did tell him if, you know, he could contact his elected officials, and he came tonight, so I have nothing further to add.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Harmon Gunther.
A friend of mine who lives in Southfield asked me tonight, or this afternoon, if Southfield has a lockbox program, as West Bloomfield and Royal Oak have. And thinking about it, a lot of senior citizens live at home alone, and if anything should happen to them, they might be able to call 911, but then the police come over and break down their door. With a lockbox program like they have in the other cities, the police would have a chance to have a box there, they would have the code to it, you know, have the kid inside to get the key, and open the door, and help the person. So I would consider that something that our administrator, or you know, somebody should look into, maybe have that here in Southfield also. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not familiar with that program, but maybe our Neighborhood Services Committee can take a look at some other surrounding cities and see what they have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have one item, which is a request for the Planning Commission to have a joint meeting with the City Council on April 17th at 5:00 PM, and I believe this meeting will be taking place in the Parks and Rec Building, on the second floor.
Yeah, if I may, we've scheduled that meeting for room 221, which is on the second floor.
All right. Council, any questions?
The 15th?
17. 17.
April 17th.
17.
At 5:00 PM, at Parks and Rec, room number 221.
Did we, did we see another day? Or?
I thought he said the 15th.
That was the, because we're going to do it before the council meeting that evening.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request to schedule a joint meeting with the Planning Commission for April 17th.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the request to schedule a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on April 17th at 5:00 PM in the Parks and Rec Room 221. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And to our Assistant City Planner, the Planning Commission will also be posting that meeting under their public schedule as well.
Yes, correct, and we'll also be, Planning Department will be putting an agenda together as well. We'll pass that on to the council.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And next, we have ordinances.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 1768, the rental registration.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to introduce ordinance 1768, rental registration. Any questions?
I would just like to let council know that there was a minor change to the ordinance that was presented last time, and I meant to send something out to everyone, and I apologize. Instead of the, I believe it was an eight and a half by 14 piece of paper, our building department has reduced the size of the notice to be like a sticker, kind of like a guardian alarm sticker, with the name, contact information, and I believe, you know, where they're registered. That is reflected in the ordinance, so I didn't want someone to go back and say, wait, this changed, and so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
No.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to introduce ordinance 1768. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our agenda items for discussion and our action. And item A is an authorization to apply for the Michigan Spark Grant through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for Inglewood Park renovation project.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Russell Malberg, Parks and Recreation. If you don't know me, I think I know everybody by now. I'm here on behalf of Parks and Recreation to seek authorization to apply for a Michigan Spark Grant through the Department of Natural Resources. The Spark Grant Program was created to help create, renovate, or redevelop public outdoor recreation opportunities with an emphasis on communities whose economic opportunities and health hit hardest, were hit hardest by COVID. Our project that we're asking authorization just to apply for is for Inglewood Park, and what we would be asking to do is pave the recreational loop around the park, which is currently slag or aggregate, it's about two-thirds of a mile along, and then have a new restroom facility. So the one that's there now is currently pretty dated, it's not very accessible, it's pretty small, especially given that it is our busiest park, and it is only open six months a year, it's seasonal at this time, it's not heated, so we would be adding a heated year-round restroom. And then the other smaller part would be a paved sidewalk entry closer to the barn, and just to give folks another entry into the park. This grant program has a unique step where we actually have to get permission to apply for it, and actually, you'll hear another one in a second here from a Planning Department, but the deadline for the application has not been announced yet, but we're trying to get out ahead of it. It's expected to be in the spring here, so we're trying to make sure we've got this before that deadline is announced. And if we are fortunate enough to be awarded, I'll be back here in front of you all with another letter here and on another date, and attempting to get the project started that way. So I would be happy to hear any questions you might have.
Councilman Fraser?
Yes, do you have the forms and all to apply for?
We do, and we've got, so we already have the list of questions that'll be on the grant application. We are also working with a consultant group, HRC, to get a schematic, which would be something that we would need to supply at the time of application, as well as a deed to prove that the city owns the park and that sort of thing. There's not a whole lot. The questions will be answered in a collaboration with our Park Superintendent, Steve Griffith, who's here as well, Director Fields, myself, and that consultant group.
Okay, also, do you know how much the state is going to award?
That's a great question.
And is it going to cover what you're trying to do?
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, because I didn't even tell you how much we're applying for, which is the maximum, a million dollars. Any grant application can be from $100,000 to a million. We are seeking the maximum amount, a million dollars, and we already have prices for the aspects of it, and it'll be every bit of that. We don't expect to exceed it by very much at all.
Okay, and the last question I have is, do you know what kind of surface you're going to have on the path that you put again?
We would be paving it. So right now, at-
Pardon?
We would be paving it, with asphalt. Yep. And we would make it more accessible all year round, which is the main thing, because right now, in the winter, when you typically drive by, I typically see people doing laps in the parking lot. The slag path right now has some puddles in places, but also it gets too muddy in the wintertime, and it just doesn't hold up as well. But if it's paved, we would also be making it at least eight foot wide, so it would be much more accessible to folks, and be able to fit more people all year round.
Handicap accessible?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, you would be able to walk, you'd be able to walk laps recreationally, or utilize the recreational path for a variety of folks, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Brightwell?
Just from a curiosity standpoint, what is the traffic over in Inglewood?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
You indicated that Inglewood is one of the busiest parks. What is the traffic, or what is the-
It's tough to gauge all year round, so in the winter certainly, it's less, but it's because six months out of the year, we don't have a restroom there, and also our fields aren't used as much, so that's where we house our softball leagues, we have rentals over there, that playground is one of our busiest. I know in our master plan, it was mentioned as the busiest, the most visited by our residents as well.
Okay, so what is the second busiest?
What is the-
I'm just trying to get a handle, how much traffic do you-
Well, when we have softball going, all four fields are taken with what would be eight teams of at least 12, so then you've got people who are recreationally walking, and it's not uncommon to see 200 people there, 300 people there at any given time throughout. If you go by on a nice day in the summertime, it's really, really, really busy. And it would be part of a, that park has a number of things in the future that we might be approaching you for as well. A lot of the features are new. We've been lucky with grants at Inglewood Park. I believe it was 2014, we got some work done on the fields, and the little gazebo that's in the middle of them. I think about 10 years earlier. This year, actually, the playground equipment turns 20 years old that's there, and that was with a grant as well. So there's, we've been lucky on that site.
Okay, no, I'm impressed with Inglewood, and I've been there over the years many times, but it was just a curiosity course-
And a lot of it has to do with its location, right on 12 Mile. It also helps us hopefully with this grant application, because you get extra points for being a park that's accessible many different ways. We get a point for a bus stop being right out in front, we get a point for being able to ride by car, by walking path through to the neighborhood behind, so hopefully that helps us as well.
Okay.
Councilwoman Hoag?
I was just going to ask, you did say you're going to expand the walking path, which would be great, because it is crowded. But also, what about the parking lot?
Future project. So part of the, so even the layout of the parking lot isn't ideal, I would say. I don't know the history of it, to be honest with you, but I do know that when there's 200 or 300 people there especially, it's not user-friendly. But I do see in its future additional projects, such as that berm, the berms that are out by the road make it tough to see inside the park, so removing those is a future project. This will have the restroom facility, the playground equipment is 20 years old now, so that's on our, that's in our master plan for replacement in the coming years, so parking lot is absolutely on there, yes.
Yeah, I think if I recall, I know that it's a crowded walking path, and I recall the parking lot being bad. Now, my other question, the baseball fields or softball fields, are there sitting stands there? I can't recall.
There are.
There are, okay.
Yep, there are.
Yeah, that's a very popular-
Smaller ones, but yeah.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Taylor?
I just have a quick question, Russell, if you would please. Could you talk to us about the drainage? Because like you said, there's puddles sometime, and where's that water going to run off to now when we have-
Future project, but very future project. Yeah, that one, that one, Steve Griffith with our Parks Department is working with our DPW, Department of Public Works, to hopefully get those done in the coming year. And so, yeah, there's two fields specifically that have some standing water at times, after a bad storm, probably tomorrow they'll have it, but, oh, as a matter of fact, he'll let you know.
Oh, okay, thank you.
How you doing? I'm Steve Griffith. We've been working hand-in-hand with DPW. We have a lot of drainage concerns there, along the parking lot there, along the playground area, next to the barn itself, and also along the baseball diamonds. So we are working with them, we're trying to get it scheduled in. We had it scheduled during the winter, when the ground was going to be frozen, but it never really froze, so we didn't want to create any more damage than possible. So we're trying to reschedule now, and hopefully we'll get something done this spring, early summer.
Okay, will that be impacting the residents behind that, or at all?
This particular project, no. Once we get to the baseball diamonds and fix the drainage ditch behind, that should help out a little bit. We're going to remove some of the water that's leaking into the wooded area-
Yeah.
And then we're going to put some tubes in to go underneath the path before it would be paved, and getting back into the storm sewer.
Okay, and I don't know if you would know this or not, but we have a lot of deer over there as well.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that project is going to move them more into the neighborhood, you think?
I don't think so at all.
Okay, because the area is still going to be wooded?
Yes. Yeah, we're not going to touch the woods at all.
Okay.
Some of the trees we're going to cut down, like the large cotton woods that go by the pathways and stuff, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. Those were my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I know that there's a lot of drainage issues. I know last year, Steve and I, I think we went park by park-
Yes.
-with all the different drainage issues, but Russell, with this grant, is there, is there any match from the city, or is it strictly just give us money?
No, there is not a match to the million dollars that we're asking.
Okay, and we can ask for a million, that's the most, but they can always say, we're only giving you 100,000 or 500,000.
It's, I believe it's either a yes or no. Your grant application can be for anywhere from 100,000 to a million dollars, and throughout the life of this program that they've got going.
Okay.
There were, there was a first round, I'm sorry, there was a first round, and it's 65 million dollars overall that can be given out through the life of this program, and the first round that was in December was really only five weeks, I think, after they announced the deadline date, so it's a lot of ducks to get in a row before you'd be able to apply. But it was a smaller round, and there was only 14 million, just shy of 15 million, so there's still 50 million in the program.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Russell, isn't there, there are restrooms there?
Yeah.
There are restrooms, yep. Yeah, there's a restroom-
But they're not heated, is that it?
They are not heated, so they're one of our seasonal restrooms.
All right, so they're not open in the winter?
They're not open, yeah, six months really, so it's right on schedule with a couple of our other parks, from May 1st through the end of October. And like if you were to think about it in terms of accessibility, it's really tight, even for honestly a bigger guy like myself, it feels like you're in a tiny house a little bit, so really, it also doesn't match the use of that park. So just the number of restrooms, the accessibility of the restrooms, and it's kind of deteriorating a little bit itself. The roof is in line for a new replacement, it's a building that's not worth putting more money into just to ultimately have an obsolete facility.
All right, so one other comment, and then really not related to this, but while you were there, and talking about this park, I really favor, I've walked the trail there, and in places, it's, especially we have the kind of weather we've been having, it's really muddy. So I think paving the walking path is a step in the right direction. I know there are a couple of people that disagree with that, they like the gravel, but it's not all that practical.
Yeah.
And then, this is not really related to the grant, I don't think, but you know, the storm, we had, we lost a lot of trees in that park. And then at last meeting, our Parks and Rec, or rather, our Public Works Director told us the extent of the loss of trees in the city this winter, 3,000 trees? So is there a, and I think Steve's going to tell me something.
Good guess.
I was hoping there is a plan to replace trees.
So right now, until we put the whole project in place, we lost, I would say probably 23 to 27 trees a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
It was devastating for the park. You can still probably walk around and see some of the damage that's left there, from some of the treetops that were left. But we have a berm we want to replace, or remove, I should say. On that berm, I think we lost 15 trees alone, okay? We do want to remove that berm, open up the site into the park. Once we do that, let's work on the drainage, and then at that point, we can start placing some trees strategically around the playground area, and also along the paths.
Okay, good to hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Future project. All right. Councilman Hoag, you had another question?
Well, maybe. I want to think positive that we're going to get this grant, but let's just say we don't. What happens to those renovations? Are they still going to happen?
This project, not now. It's not that they wouldn't happen, but we wouldn't have it to be able to be funded in the coming year or two. The project, the projects that are, the grants are for, good opportunity to say that right now, is you have to commit the money by a certain, I think it's October of '24, and they have to be done by '26. That's if we're awarded. I don't know the timeline of this project, should we not get it, but let's think positive.
Yeah, we'll think positive, we'll get it, but are you saying that renovations won't be done until 20-
No, 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 if we get the grant, we'd have to have it completed by '26. We would start just about right away. If we get, if we're awarded with this, we wouldn't hesitate. We would work right away with our planning, or excuse me, our purchasing department. We would start the whole process, we would go out to bid for the three major aspects. We already have some prices in line, but we wouldn't, if we get it, if we get the grant, we're going to start right away.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we authorize Parks and Rec to apply for the Spark Grant in the amount of a million dollars to renovate Inglewood Park.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve Parks and Rec Department to apply for the Michigan Spark Grant for the Inglewood renovation project as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have an authorization to seek a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Spark Grant for the Valley Woods Trailhead Project.
Good evening. I'm here to also present the Michigan Spark Grant through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. So the Planning Department is requesting approval that we apply for the Spark Grant for the Valley Woods Trailhead Project. As mentioned, these grant funding will be awarded to certain projects that are for disadvantaged communities who have been adversely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, so a lot of these trail projects would coincide with their requirements. So a little bit about Valley Woods Trail, it is an ambitious project, a long time coming, and it's been part of the Valley Woods Revitalization Program and Plan that was adopted back in 2014, and essentially, the trail, the overall trail would extend from the 12 Mile between Telegraph and Bell Road, southwest to West 10 Mile Road. But the project that we're specifically looking at is the Trailhead near Streamwood Lane adjacent to Barbarian Woods, and a few of the existing conditions and constraints that we face is lack of accessibility. So the Parks and Rec Master Plan actually identifies this particular park as having an accessibility of a Level 2, which means that has very little accessibility for, you know, outside personnel to be able to access the site. So some existing, other existing constraints along Barbarian Woods is, not many people know that it's there, so Streamwood Lane is a cul-de-sac with a lot of residential developments, and people tend to park along the cul-de-sac to be able to access this natural preserve. I believe a lot of residents have had to instruct people on where to go and park, and it looks like private property, so not many people know that it's there, and it's an amenity that the city offers. So what we're proposing for this grant is Phases 1, 2, and 4. According to this concept plan, it would include features like a gravel parking lot, and the first loop of a gravel trail through a very open field. This isn't necessarily a woodsy area, but it's an open field that's very scenic, and in the future, Phase 4 would connect to Barbarian Woods, which is the park near Streamwood Drive. And as mentioned- And as mentioned, our proposed site features would be, uh, a gravel pathway, uh, a gravel parking lot with just a few parking spaces for visitors to be able to access, uh, the park, and some bio retention to capture any, um, excess stormwater, and we'd have trail markers, um, throughout the park. So, ultimately, we are seeking six hundred, seven thousand, five hundred dollars to apply for the grant. Um, and this project would be Priority Number Two in comparison to Inglewood. Um, we have a maximum of three project submissions, and, um, Inglewood takes, takes priority, so we, this will be Priority Number Two, um, for the Michigan Spark Grant. And, yeah, we are ultimately seeking approval to proceed with, um, applying for the grant. Thank you.
Council, any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. With reference to the Spark Grant, um, can that grant be used, or for a dog park? Can the application be made, um, for a dog park, do you know?
I believe so, I think the requirements are vague enough where, um, if it's an outdoor space that benefits the community, and we can make the argument that that park, um, would ultimately be a benefit to the community, um, I think it could.
And I know you've put a lot of work into this, um, Valley Woods project right now, but I would like to just state for the record that if another Spark Grant opportunity comes forward, that we consider a dog park. We've been talking about it a lot in the city of Southfield. I believe we might have a proposed site that's presently being looked at. While this looks like a beautiful project, I personally have been there many times. I don't see anyone walking in that area, utilizing that area. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Personally, I'd rather see that money put here somewhere on this campus, at one of the more active parks. Um, I didn't say anything to the first presentation with Parks and Recreation, only because Inglewood does need improvements. It is a very, very busy park. Beachwoods is a busy park, um, we have other busy parks. I, I know what we're trying to accomplish here, I just don't know in my heart if, I, if, if we can get the money or the grants, I'd like to see it utilized for something the people have been asking for. So, um, I just wanted to make that comment for the record, please.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think, um, you know, if we decide to include another project in our submission, we're allowed three, and, um, we can rank them in terms of priority. I personally would be happy if we got any grant funding, it doesn't matter if it's my project or someone else's. Um, and I think in their, uh, project guidelines, they state that it doesn't necessarily mean that if you rank a project as number one, that it will be funded. It, I think they're gonna evaluate it based on their program requirements, so I would say we should, yeah, we, we can apply for the maximum of three and see what happens and hope for the best.
Okay, and I don't know, maybe you can work with Parks and Recreation, um, because I just feel really strong about this. And, um, you know, if we bring another Spark Grant forward and that we're not gonna consider a dog park, um, probably won't vote in favor of it, that's just my opinion, thank you.
Hey, Councilman Fraser?
Yes, um, uh, I think it was the last meeting, meeting before last, the planner came forward with, uh, a plan to build a butterfly garden. Is there a possibility of building something along the, the walkway that you're talking about? Like butterflies, because the monarch butterfly has, has taken a big hit, uh, and, uh, people need to do everything they can to, uh, reinvest in monarch butterflies, if you will. But is there a possibility of that being part of the, a write-up for the, the grant? That, that's part of what you'll spend the money for?
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's a great idea, that can definitely be incorporated in the trail, and it could be an amenity and a learning opportunity for visitors, so we can definitely include that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
I think this is a, a good project, so, in, in reading, in, in reading things, um, you can di- we can digest certain things. But just verbally, can you tell me the efficacy of this particular project? And why you think it's such a project that, that is, uh, worthy, that city is worthy of this project?
Yeah, sure, so I think the more trails we have, the, it, it's just gonna attract more residents. And if the city is hoping to see younger residents, uh, move to the city, this is a perfect project for that. I personally live in Rochester Hills, and I live by the Paint Creek Trail and the Clinton River Trail, and it's one of the reasons I chose to live there is because of the amount of trails and the ability to take my bike, recreate, go downtown, do my shopping, and, you know, uh, exercising, and, um, if the city's moving in that direction for, you know, trying to attract younger residents, this is the project for, for more economic development.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Council, any other questions? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the city of Southfield to apply for the DNR Spark Grant in the amount of six hundred and seven thousand plus dollars for the Valley Woods Trailland, Trailhead Project, I'm sorry.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve authorization to seek a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Spark Grant for the Valley Woods Trailhead Project as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation and discussion regarding a proposed gas station with convenience store on Twelve Mile and Northwestern Highway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so this project before you this evening is a special land use and site plan review request of Rocky Yeldau. Uh, this is for two properties on the corner of Northwestern Highway and Twelve Mile Road. Uh, property address is two eight eight three zero, two eight eight four four Northwestern Highway. Uh, properties are Zone B three general business. The special use request is for a gas station with a convenience store and carryout. And the site plan request is for the construction of that gas station, five thousand four hundred and forty-five gross square feet. Uh, this is the property in question. Uh, currently, the property has a vacant building that was a FedEx office on it, right on the corner. Uh, this is actually two properties that would be joined into one, should it move forward. The second property has a small shopping center on it, as well as a dry cleaner that fronts on Northwestern Highway. These are various views of the property from both Northwestern and from Twelve Mile Road. As I noted, B three general business is the current zoning, uh, that does allow for gas stations as special land use. And the future land use plan does show regional mixed use for the area. Uh, through the Planning Department process with the Planning Commission, uh, we did ask the petitioner to provide a map showing, uh, gas stations that are located in the area. Uh, this is not the first time that, uh, concern about adding another gas station to Southfield has come up. So, we did ask for the comparison map, uh, that is provided here. And we did provide an additional map, uh, it's a little bit closer view. Uh, the area in red is the area of the proposed new station. Uh, the areas in green are existing stations, uh, and then the property in yellow is one that was recently approved over the last six months or so. So, this kinda gives you an idea of the arrangement of gas stations within the immediate area of the proposal. This is the colored site plan. Again, the request is for a five thousand square foot building, be located along the eastern property line with pumps and the pump canopy, uh, more in the center of the property. Uh, if I could just go back here just for a second to the, the property itself. Uh, currently, both between Northwestern Highway and Twelve Mile Road, there are six, uh, different curb cuts, uh, into this property. Uh, you have three on Northwestern Highway, three on Twelve Mile Road. Uh, the proposal for this gas station would actually reduce that down to just two curb cuts, one on Northwestern Highway, one on Twelve Mile Road. From a standpoint of reduced traffic, uh, pulling in and out of the properties, uh, this would be a benefit for both Twelve Mile and Northwestern Highway in this area. Proposed site plan for the property, uh, it does include EV charging station, uh, for electric vehicles. Uh, does show all brand-new landscaping on the site. Uh, does require, uh, a couple of zoning board appeals waivers for the pump canopy, uh, that would be fronting on both Northwestern Highway and Twelve Mile Road. So, I noted the landscaping, significant upgrade to what's there right now, uh, so it would really make this corner nice. And proposed elevations, now this is what the building would look like both on the north, south, east, and then west. And the photometric plan, that's part of the requirement. Floor plan, so they do show the floor plan, both, uh, at the main level, and then they do have a mezzanine level, uh, that would be for employees only on the second floor. Um, with that, we do have Mr. Rocky Yeldau here this evening to explain his project further. And with that, I would invite him up to, uh, explain his proposal.
Great. And if you can just give your name and business address for the record, please?
Hello, uh, Rocky Yeldau, um, business address says, uh, current.
Whichever you want.
Let's use, uh, uh, five eight eight three, Naniva Court, Wesblow Field, Michigan, four eight three two two.
Could you stand closer to the microphone?
I apologize, sir. I'm sorry?
Stand closer to the microphone.
Sure.
Joe Kane from Fieldstone Architecture, thirty-four hundred Auburn Road, Auburn Hills.
Do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, Jeff pretty well explained it, uh, you know, like you said, we did, uh, work with a traffic study, uh, Fleas Vanderbrook, I think that's correct, um, and we worked with MDOT as well as, uh, the Road Commission as far as placing the drive locations, and they are approved contingent on final engineering.
Councilman Fraser?
You gonna have an ice chest?
We, per the Planning Commission meetings, we were, uh, stated that we all, sales would be all internal. The building will be nothing exterior, no ice bins, newspaper racks, uh, ice, or, uh, windshield washer. Everything will be inside the store, nothing on the exterior, outside.
Okay, cuz I think our ordinance, and Jeff, you can straighten me out and add if I'm wrong. Our, um, ordinance says that you can have stories as long as it's associated with automobiles outside, but the rest of it has to be inside, so.
Correct, everything will be inside.
Is that, am I right there?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay.
Right, Councilman Brightwell?
Um, what, what, and ask us, what are, what, what are your plans for EV? And when you propose to, let's say, when you think you will be transitioning to, uh, um, electrical vehicles?
So, right now, we are proposing, it's one pump station that serves two parking stalls for charging. We also have plans to put in additional as, as the program develops more and more. Um, Mr. Yeldau can explain that, uh, you know, the, the technology is, you know, changing daily. So, um, what we put in, you know, today may not be what's gonna be needed for the future. So, they're gonna be constantly upgrading, so we're proposing to put in one pump station for two parking stalls, and then we would, uh, expand that as needed.
Okay, I know it's probably in here, but how many stations do you propose to have in total?
Right now, right now, just the one station for two, two, two cars.
Uh, I mean, in, in, with the combustion gasoline and.
Oh, okay, we, right now, there, we, we have, uh.
Tw- uh, we have, uh, six pumps that would serve, uh, twelve vehicles, and then we have a charging station that serves two cars. And as the technology and the demand develops for, we have proposed, uh, a total of, uh, six, uh, charging stations, along with, uh, added parking and all that to meet requirements.
Right, okay, so what, what would be the driver? And what, what parameters, or what do you look at from an industry standpoint to tell you, you need to put in more EV stations? Or that, when you're, not getting into proprietary info, but what, what, what would drive you to, uh, install more?
Just demand, as, as demand increases, um, nationally, uh, you know, nationally, sometimes California could have much more higher demand, and then, you know, you move into forward. So, Tesla's building at Eight Mile and Telegraph is, you know, then they're putting a what at, just gotta prove that Maple and Orchard. I don't know if you guys know that or not. Um, and then their EV chargers are gonna combine, everybody else has had stick and my, so as the demand increases, we wanna increase, so it's part of our benefit and to serve the community. So, it's as it goes, it's kinda, it's kind of a, a national demand, you know? And, and then an area demand, more or less, and then you just increase it as you go.
Okay.
You know, it just comes in, if you feel like as the, the increase is needed, then you increase it, the, the capacity is there.
Okay, so you, you are, you, are you putting in the infrastructure now to, that you potentially could move toward that? Because it's coming down the road, that's a given.
Correct, it's, it's all, you know, electrocuted and plugged in and ready to go, you just kinda add as you.
Okay, alright, so the infrastructure.
Expand as necessary.
Expand as you need.
Excuse me?
We would just expand as necessary.
Okay.
Increase the number of pump stalls.
No additional construction needed, it's just kinda, kinda already, uh, infrastructure's already built in.
The infrastructure is there, you just, okay, good, good enough, thank you.
Right, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, while the, the design and everything of the building is beautiful, I guess I question, and I question my colleagues, this is gonna make the fifth gas station in that area. We just approved the fourth gas station, um, a few months ago. I drove by the site and they haven't started construction yet, so I don't know when they're going to. But do we really need five gas stations in this area? I guess, that's a question, I.
Talk about the traffic direction.
You know, when you, when you drive by there, I mean, like I said, there's four gas stations, and we're not even talking, is it like a quarter? Jeff, is it a quarter of a mile? Four gas stations within a quarter of a mile?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to the, the image, but yeah, that, that's correct.
Is that, is it less than a quarter of a mile? Do you know from like?
I don't know the exact dimensions, ma'am.
So, you're, this, this will make the fifth gas station. I don't know, it just seems like there's a lot of gas stations on this corner, or in this area. And I'm not sure if I'm in favor of a fifth gas station in this area.
May I, uh, speak?
Yes.
So, um, so, uh, you know, the concern of having too many gas stations, I would agree with you. Um, with all due respect, I believe there was a gas station approved right there in the yellow, uh, not too long ago, which honestly, with all due respect, doesn't serve much of a purpose because there's one, two on the same direction. Northwestern splits, so we, we live in a, a very fast society, uh, just like Telegraph Road. Most people aren't gonna go that way and turn just to go to some gas station, right? You wanna get in conveniently, go your way, same thing. That was approved and doesn't serve a purpose because it's a very small lot, no different than the other ones. So, facing that direction, there's no gas station or convenience of, of sort of project that we're doing. Coming out of the freeway, going home, it's Southfield, it's Farmington Hills, that drives traffic into this area. This and the other one are the only two that serve it properly, uh, versus the other two small ones. And that's why we feel it's a, a proper project, and it serves Twelve Mile Road and a lot of trucks that pass through that don't have such, uh, uh, use, uh, for added diesel and, uh, electric vehicles. So, going that way, you've got forty-eight thousand cars headed home, and there is nothing on that site, except there's a lot on this site, and that's the reason why we thought it was a, a great project for that corner.
And then, um, if your site is approved, as you know, right now, um, beer, wine, and liquor is not allowed to be sold in gas stations, however, the city is looking at it. Are you building a station with, if it does go through in the city, that you will be adding it to that corner?
We would like to do that, please, yes, we would like to do that. We are, um, we would be prepped to do that properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes, thank you. Um, this is a corner that I'm very familiar with, I drive it every day, every single day, so I know. so I know what's currently there, what you're proposing would be a great improvement. What I, I questioned the gas, the, the number of gas stations in the area as well, however, what helped me was when you changed the entrances, because there right now is just too many, and when we turn off Northwestern to go to, to Twelve Mile, people cut right through there. That will be eliminated if you put just the two, which would make it a little bit safer. And I also agree with you, coming down Twelve Mile, there is not another gas station going that way, so that would help in that traffic and for people driving, like for me, if I'm going home, if I wanna go to the gas station. I can see that as an improvement, although I do agree that we do have a number of gas stations there. We do need to, you know, think about that or be cognizant of it, but for that area, I think it would be a great improvement, having something there compared to what's there now. It's just, it's just better, and I like that you listened to the planning commission and made adjustments, especially to those entrances and exits, that's very important to me. Will the entrance and exit, if you, if you, this project is approved, would it be, be, before that turn? Because the turn coming off Northwestern is where people tend to cut across, but if that is not available, then they would have to go to Twelve Mile to make the turn, which would make it a lot safer, because if you're coming out of the gas station, they would block that lane, so I just wanna make sure that that's not gonna be, when you turn, you cannot go straight across.
Correct.
That's the idea, yeah, that's what we approved with MDOT.
Okay, 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 then I'm, I'm okay with what's being present, I, I like it, I am concerned with the number of gas stations, I, I do have to say that, because there is another BP down Northwestern, but Twelve Mile is where I can see the benefit, I really can see that. So with that, I, I, I think this is good for that area for those reasons, so, thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, in your plan, you're gonna start out with one charging station for two automobiles, and as it grows, it'll, you'll be adding charging stations. Who do you think are your customers? Where are your customers gonna come from? If you come in for, fill up your tank with gas, you're gonna be there about five minutes. I don't think you're gonna get a charge on your car in five minutes, so who's gonna, who are you planning to use those?
So the charging stations are what they call superchargers, so they are fast, I don't know for time frame, but.
They have a level one, level two, and level three, level ones. They have level one, level two, and level three charges currently.
What does that mean?
So level one means they're the ones that go in your garages, you know, and, you know, and then level two are the ones that go into like a shopping center or hotels, and you can park there, and it takes, you know, overnight to fill, and level three are the, the high chargers, which, that's what we spoke about, why we're not adding immediately, they're, the technology's daily, constantly improving. You know, you can charge your car within fifteen minutes and go on your way, eventually it's gonna be five to six minutes, and that's the reason why we're not adding six, six at a time, we're adding one, two, three, and four as we need them. The, the, the charging world is gonna, is, is improving by, by the minute as we're here, so you're not gonna be there for an hour and a half charging, you're gonna be there for fifteen, twenty minutes with these high efficiency chargers, eventually it's gonna be six to seven minutes, just like filling up your car, and that's the reason why, it's just the technology is, is going towards demand. As the demand increases, as it's improving, like I said, Tesla's making ahead that fits not just Tesla, it fits every other car, and then, as you know, they make a very high speed, you know, charge, so that's, that's what that is concerning your question, we're not looking for someone to sit there for an hour. These are level three, they will take maybe fifteen minutes versus six minutes to fill up for right now. Eventually, it's gonna be the same equivalence of time.
Sounds good.
That's not according to me, that's according to studies and technologies that we've been searching by the charging stations.
I don't think I've ever seen any, any information that says that you could charge a battery that fast, as fast as you, as, as you depicted. It's, if you do it in an hour, a person, I don't know, unless, unless you have something for them to do, you have a ping pong machine or something in it for them to keep busy while the cars are charging.
It's only gonna get faster, that's the technology, that's where it's headed, you know, they don't want people, if, and by twenty thirty, if California wants everybody to be on a charging station, they don't want people sitting there for forty-five minutes, they're gonna be there sitting for four to five minutes, so it's, it's headed in that direction, you know, it's only as technology improves, as the demand grows, like I said, that's, that's, that's what the research of these big companies that we've been talking to is telling us.
Councilman Banks?
What kind of gas station, did you say this was gonna be, what gas will you be selling?
It would be most likely a Shell gas station, either a Mobil brand or a Shell brand, but at this point, because the one you approved across the street may go to a Mobil, so it'd be either a, a high brand, either a Mobil or a Shell, depending on what to use is across the street, so it doesn't saturate the, the brand.
Do we know what the last gas station that we approved is gonna be?
I believe that that was gonna be a Mobil.
Don't you, I mean, can you just build a gas station without knowing what kind of gas you're gonna put there? I mean, don't you have to get approval from the, the gas company as to whether they want to put gas there?
We have an approval from both, and that's the reason why I'm familiar with, with, with what's going across the street.
You have, you have approval from Mobil?
And, and Shell, and that's the reason, that's the reason why I'm aware of what the other gentleman is using.
It just seems interesting that Mobil would approve two gas stations so close.
They haven't, that's my point, so if, if the gentleman wouldn't be using Mobil, we would be using Mobil, that's the reason why we talked to two different brands.
I guess, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
The, the reason is, is there's, the, the brands would like their name recognized on such a road with high traffic. If the one is going across the street, it doesn't make sense to have two of them, so we talked to two different high brands, which is Mobil and Shell, two leading brands, and they both like the site, so if there's, they don't want two across three from each other unless it's the same owner willing to do it. Both the brands love the location, so both the brands would be willing to approve it based on what's going across the street since that was approved first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? The only question I had was with your EV stations, I understand right now there's not a big demand for it, but it seems that you're setting yourself up to have them in a back corner of the, of the station. Is there a reason you're, you have it tucked away?
Yes, request of the fighter department to be remotely as far away from the gasoline pumps as possible.
Initially, we, initially, we had them in the front.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Can I also add that Mr. Yeldow had a site analysis done by the, the fuel station companies in comparison to the other gas stations around to make sure this would support the area and is needed based on, you know, the fuel, the sales of, of the seed store, and also what he's bringing to get to the grab and go, the quick food takeout, that this would all support this area, so it's not just another gas station too, so he has other services with the grab and go and takeout.
Okay, thank you, so this will be coming back to us Monday, April twenty-fourth for a public hearing on the special use request and site plan review, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Has it finished going through the, all planning commission?
I'm sorry?
Has it finished going through all of the planning commission?
Yes, yes, yeah, we've been through the planning commission process, yes.
Okay, yes.
I've noticed that a lot of the new gas stations also are partnering with fast food restaurants and having a fast food restaurant within that station. Are you proposing that also for this site?
Currently, we're preparing a maid-to-order kitchen and a grab-and-go food, such as gourmet food, pizza, and chicken. At this moment, we're not sure for branding it, or if we're just gonna run it on, under our Go Fresh brand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation, discussion, and action regarding a zoning ordinance text amendment.
Yeah, actually, this evening, we'll just have the, the discussion and the presentation, there'll be no action required by counsel tonight. This is a zoning text amendment, PZTA twenty-three dash zero 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 one. This particular text amendment is to add the property located at one six zero two five Northland Drive to the Boundary District of the Northland Overlay Development District. So this is section five point two two dash three of the zoning ordinance, and then we would also amend the map, as you see here on the screen this evening, to include that property. So the property in question is the one that circled in, in purple there, just to the west of the Boundary District, that's along Northland Drive, and I'll get us a little bit closer. So this is the, the vacant AT&amp;T building, has been vacant for some time, and the property owner has tried to, has suggested different types of uses on this particular property to no avail, so they approached the city with regard to adding this property to the Boundary District. What it would do, it would allow the property to become or to have other uses that could be on the site other than what's currently allowed in the B three right now. The also advantage of being added to the, to the Northland Development Boundary District would be that we get enhanced landscaping, enhanced pedestrian amendments on the property itself. It also allows for additional mixed use. Now, the proposal for the use of the building would be for self-storage. And if I may, just to remind counsel that not too far up the road, Contour is constructing up to two thousand apartments on the Northland property, so the possibility for the use of this property for self-storage actually increases as a result of that, so that would be the proposal that would follow on the tail of, should counsel approve the text amendment to add this particular property in. So that's kind of the gist of the presentation this evening. Again, the text amendment would be to add this particular property to the Overlay Development District for Northland.
So you're saying that there's already a proposed use, if, if the council should move forward with this?
If, if the council was to move forward with the text amendment to allow this property, then we have developers approached us already to put self-storage on this property as well as a proposal for mixed-use development.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Councilman Banks?
Could you go to the map before that picture, please, or this?
I'm sorry?
Could you go to the previous map? Okay, so it, it's really light, we're talking about the circle in the lower left-hand corner, is that correct?
Yep.
So next to the circle is, I believe it's an empty building, it used to be a.
It was like, you know, it needed wholesalers, like, I believe it was a wholesalers. It, it originally was a Home Depot that went away, and I believe it was a wholesaler that went into that particular location.
Isn't the wholesale, isn't it closed, the wholesaler? No, they're still there, and then to the north, I think that's north, going up to this property, isn't that where the?
It's the Reynolds.
The Reynolds Building, that?
Correct.
So is there, I, I'm just curious, it looks like there's just like three buildings in that area, why, I mean?
You want all the buildings included?
I, I don't know, should we include, well, actually, there's more than three, I see, wait, one, two, three.
If I may, through the chair, if, if your question is, should we include those other buildings in? We did approach the owner of the Reynolds Aluminum Building to no avail, they did not respond. Literally, what we're trying to do is we're doing this like one step at a time, that if this does move forward and does become successful, that we would look at potential for moving further down and west along Eight Mile Road.
So at one time, wasn't this also a gym years ago on this corner?
The Reynolds Aluminum Building, Bally's did have that building, yes, as a Bally's, correct.
The, the building that's in the circle that we're talking about?
No, no, it's always been the AT&amp;T building.
Across the way. Bally's was in the Reynolds Building.
Bally's was in the Reynolds Building?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
May I, through the chair, Ed, what maybe you're not seeing is Northland Drive continues over to Eight Mile, so you have the former AT&amp;T building, across the street, you have the Reynolds Building, you have, and it's in the picture up at the top, and then you have what was Home Depot and is now the wholesale warehouse. There isn't a lot of traffic there, but I live nearby, I drive by there, there are cars and tractor trailers. Basically, the store's turned in for years now into a warehouse. So you really have just the two buildings on that curve between Northwestern Highway and Northland Drive where it comes into Eight Mile.
Okay, I guess that's, I can read it better there than what's here, I, the Northland Drive, okay. Guess I was on the wrong side of the street, and then I know where we're talking, okay, thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes, I'm gonna ask it again, has anybody done a study on how many self-storage units we have in Southfield? And what's the, what's the capacity and what's the fill?
If, if I recall, the last one that went through the process was the one up on Southfield Road, east side of the street, just north of Twelve Mile Road. That's the one that had the iconic art on it of the, of the men's having lunch on the, on the girder in New York, if you recall that particular project. At that time, a market study was done on that particular location, and it was found that Southfield was still underutilized with regard to self-storage facilities. I don't recall the exact numbers, they gave a particular square footage per resident, I believe, and I think we are still deficient by four percent, I forget exact, I forget the exact number, sir. I'd be happy to, to bring that back forward, but at the time, we were still deficient, at least from the standpoint of, of self-storage facilities and square footage in Southfield. I will tell you that from the conversation that the, the city planner had just recently with regard to the proposal that, that might move forward, he did believe that we were getting pretty close to the saturation point for self-storage facilities in Southfield.
But as a Southfield people, and that's my concern, my concern is that we're building self-storaged buildings in Southfield, using up our property, and we're land-locked, and the people that are building them are counting on people from other communities using that self-storage, so they don't have to build in their community, and that really bothers me, that, let people build in their own community, and I know they, when that, one on Southfield Road came in, they said, people don't wanna drive more than five miles to, to store stuff, but as technology changes, there's a great possibility that there'll be less demand, and then we're stuck with all these buildings in Southfield that nobody wants to use. I'd be very careful in adding any more self-storaged buildings in Southfield unless I knew that Southfield people were gonna be using. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Jeff, a few years back, Forgotten Harvest wanted to go over in this area, what, what location? Was this the same location?
No, so Forgotten Harvest was actually looking at the Calabat property, which is, and. No, so Forgotten Harvest was actually looking at the Calabat property, which is, and let me go back one. And it's a little bit, it's not as easy to see here. You see the square where it says shopping, lifestyle? The boxes right there. So right in that area, right there, is a large vacant properties, about 10 acres there, that Calabat owns or owned that was going to do mixed-use development there. That's where Forgotten Harvest was looking at the potential for a building in that particular area there.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Council, any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
I can totally appreciate what Councilman Fraser is saying regarding the saturation. However, a couple of things to consider. Several weeks ago, I was invited to a surprise birthday party in Detroit on Grand River. And it was in a storage building. And that beautiful adaptive reuse became an event space. And as you know, you've heard me say this over and over again. We build for one purpose. Times change, needs change, and we can convert. Adaptive reuse is extremely important. It's also sustainable. So again, I attended this birthday party on a Saturday night in what was a cold storage building. And it was a phenomenal event space, adaptive reuse. The other thing to consider here is that across the way, there are going to be 2,000 apartments. One and two-bedroom, many of them, people are going to need storage. And this is right there. So I just want to point that out.
Yes?
You're, and you know, it's going to be kind of a short debate. But you're assuming that just because people move from a house into an apartment, that they're going to have a need for storage. People have yard sales and estate sales and everything all the time. And they don't take anything with them other than what they need. But I would like to know how many storage locations are in Troy, West Bloomfield, Farmington Hills, Farmington, compared to what's in Southfield? And adaptive reuse is fine. But being stuck with a white elephant in six or seven years or 10 years is not going to help Southfield with the limited amount of space that we have in the city. Because we're landlocked.
I just responded to that, if I may. This is an office building. We have a glut of office space. So here is an adaptive reuse. It happens to be a mid-century modern gem of the building. Originally, it was the Sandy Corporation that occupied it. One of the, it actually is one of the first corporate headquarters built in Southfield, dating back to about 1955. So I understand that. And I'm not necessarily talking about people who moved to from a house to an apartment, but many of them are people who live in an apartment, moving to another. So, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, seeing no other questions. This will come back to us on April 24th for a public hearing and final decision?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on the mixed-use corridor district.
Yes, thank you. So council, in June of 2022, approved the MUCD, Mixed Use Corridor District. And really, this evening, what staff just wanted to do was to kind of reiterate that this tool is available in Southfield to the development community, to the public. Again, it was enacted to promote mixed use in medium-density residential areas along several of Southfield's thoroughfares, which included Nine Mile, Ten Mile, and then Twelve Mile. Basically, eligible properties along these corridors would be vacant, underutilized, shallow-depth parcels. The whole idea behind this was to recognize that there's a benefit to the users of these properties of the community for mixed-use development and density along these particular areas. They tend to be more difficult properties to develop, being shallow properties. So this would provide an opportunity to get increased density as well as various services that could be available to not only those who might have a residential property on that particular property, but also to the neighborhood in itself. So again, I noted that there were multiple areas along Nine Mile Road, along Ten Mile Road, and this is from Evergreen Road to Greenfield Road. And then Twelve Mile, again, from Greenfield Road to the other side of Evergreen as well. So again, this is just an opportunity to provide for mixed-use development, currently where some of these properties are a little more difficult to develop.
Thank you.
It kind of gives you an idea of the types of uses that could go in with these particular areas. Mixer of uses, pedestrian orientations, community focal points, flexible transportation and parking, design, environmental sustainability, housing in missing middle. So it provides an opportunity to provide some additional housing that maybe we don't have in Southfield right now, which includes duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhouses. Kind of examples of the types of uses that we could get on these particular properties should we incorporate MUCD.
Yeah, I know that there were several developers, I referred to the planning department, and unfortunately, because of the interest rates right now, some of their projects were on hold to take some of the older office buildings or vacant shallow lands that otherwise would create much more complicated issues. And to use this tool, I think they're, they're waiting for things to calm down a little bit. But it is, it is a great tool. I mean, I know, like, in my neighborhood, if you drive around down Ten Mile between Southfield Road and Evergreen, you have a lot of these older office buildings that are just sitting there vacant. Or they're not even, they were houses within a commercial area that could definitely use a little pick-me-up. So.
Yep, so we have, again, we've had a lot of requests, especially for some of those office buildings with the potential of going to multiple family. We have one property on Ten Mile Road that actually has parking underneath the building.
Yeah.
Which would be perfect, I mean, it shields you from the elements and can have your residential above. So again, this type of tool, the mixed-use development corridor, could allow for developments of those properties above and beyond what they were originally proposed for, which would be general office.
So we should tell our friends and neighbors that this is available to use?
Yeah, again, the whole reason behind this, because it had been proposed and has been in effect since June of last year, just to kind of get it out there to the developers, again, that this tool is available and that it's welcome within the city.
Councilman Brightwell?
Jeff, what is the capacity for this? And what is, well, in a planner's term, what is it, square footage or the acreage in total?
Yeah, so the minimum acreage for these types of uses is a quarter acre. I mean, it sounds small. But it's possible that you could actually develop a mixed-use development on a quarter acre of land like this. But again, it's going to be project-specific. If you go along the various corridors, whether it's Twelve Mile, Nine Mile, Ten Mile, we do have various varying depths on some of those properties. So the potential could be, you know, rather large. A lot of development on a particular one versus maybe a smaller, shallower lot that might only be 100 feet deep.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this right, what is the total acres available for these type projects for the, in the, in this corridor area that you define?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have those exact numbers available to you. It's a lot of properties, as I noted, along those various mile roads from Greenfield to Evergreen Road. I'd be happy to get you the actual acreages for all those together, if that's what you're asking for.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, just to, so we get a understanding of the capacity that we're dealing with here. Okay, thank you, thanks.
Council, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next, we have a discussion on tiny house and accessory dwelling units.
Yes, thank you. So like with the MUCD, we've had a lot of requests for tiny homes as well as accessory dwelling units on properties. The questions have been uses such as storage containers. Would Southfield allow me to buy a storage container and use it as my home on a property? We had a development come in a number of years ago on Norwood, I believe it was South Norwood, that was more or less just a small community of houses. I believe that they were no more than 400 square feet each. And it's like a small community. They were tied together with sidewalks and driveways and parking. But they really did function as just like a small community of buildings of small tiny houses. So again, this is a result of just getting a lot of questions from the public as to whether or not we would allow these types of uses within the city. Currently, within our residential zoning districts, the minimum-size house that you can build is 1,000 square feet. That would be in our R1, R2 zoning districts. So then you can't go below that, so the minimum is 1,000. A lot of these particular structures, these units, could be anywhere from 240 square feet to 500 to maybe up to 1,000 square feet. So right now, we're kind of limited on the zoning ordinance, from a zoning ordinance standpoint, as to the size of houses that you can actually construct on our single-family residential zoning districts. I know the image on the, on the left is a duplex that actually was constructed on Westland. Council approved a rezoning of some properties on Westland a couple of years ago to allow for RT, which is attached single-family, and then allowed these duplexes to be constructed. These two were completed recently. And the petitioner has actually submitted plans for three more duplexes on Westland themselves. So it's become popular. The mother-in-law house or the mother-in-law units are also potential here where maybe things have changed where, instead of maybe living in the house itself, that the owner might want to develop or build a separate house for mother-in-law, father-in-law, family. So to give them the opportunity for that as well. Again, we talked about missing middle and tiny houses. I mean, these are the kind of trends people are looking in Southfield. They like Southfield, they want to stay here. But they are also looking for other options for housing. And we would like to try and get ahead of that by being able to introduce a potential zoning ordinance text amendment that would allow for these types of tiny units, smaller square footages within the city.
Councilman Brightwell?
Jeff, I happened to see on the Nightland News the other day. What city in the metro area is doing this now, maybe doing it big time?
Yeah, actually, we do have a number of cities around that have done these types of units. City of Ann Arbor actually has accessory dwelling units, building sizes 600 to 800 square feet. In Dearborn, they have a minimum 250 square foot for a building-size unit. Grand Rapids, 400 to 850 square feet. So there are communities a little bit larger than ours. I mean, their populations are almost twice what we are. But they are incorporating these and already have these types of units within their zoning ordinance to allow for them.
Okay, so what would, what would be the potential, I'm not sure how far you're getting with this, but what would be the potential area of the city that would be ideal for this zoning?
Well, we would think our single-family residential zoning districts would be perfect for these types of uses.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Our single-family residential zoning districts.
Okay. And you say you
Now, if I may, it may not be every single one. We may limit it to a particular zoning district.
Yeah.
And again, we'd be looking at council's direction that if you authorize us to move forward with putting regulations together, we would then come back to council with those recommendations. Again, it could be all zoning districts in residential, or it could be limited to R1, R2, R3.
Okay, and now, I don't have a problem with this, but you, you said it'd be residential. Now, if you put this in certain communities, it'd be incongruent. It would just be, it would destroy the texture of that community by placing those things. So can we put restrictions on, you know, where these will be placed?
Again, that would be up to council to make that ultimate determination as to how you would want them to lay out. Again, that's why I said the same thing about the zoning districts. You may be only comfortable with a certain zoning district allowing these types of uses, excuse me. So council would have the ability to place certain restrictions on them. Again, the communities that I noted, they kind of run the gamut on the square footages with one as the minimum size of 250 square feet, which is very small. My first house was 800 square feet in Berkeley. And to think that someone would want to live in a 250, that seemed really compact, but it's what people are looking for.
Okay, and I'll leave this note, but can you, in your research, tell us how we can kind of control what these are so it wouldn't destroy the texture of a community in something that's not discriminatory? But it's just, in essence, goes with the texture and or the, I'm not using the right word, but go with the, well, the texture?
I think I understand, yeah, I think I understand what you're talking about with regard to how the community is already made up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good enough, thank you.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you. I personally, I don't think I'd want it less than 500 square feet. And I have seen some tiny home complexes that actually were, they were attractive. But they were not mixed in with, you know, a large residential home next to them. It was just like a whole square area of land. And they built these tiny homes. I mean, I could see something like that somewhere in our city. But I'm not, I'm not sure if I would be in favor of putting a tiny home like in the middle of a subdivision with homes that are 2,000 or 3,000 square feet. And it just seems like on the pictures you showed us, the so-called mother-in-law suites, I don't know why they're called that. I mean, they look nicer than the little tiny homes here. So, I mean, it fits more with our character, what? So I don't know, it's... And if you say we have a demand for it right now.
So if I can, from my understanding, part of it is also, for example, in a residential neighborhood that people have garages. Some people are looking to transform their garage into a mother-in-law suite where they can have a bathroom, kitchen, things like that. So their mother-in-law or mother or father-in-law, whoever, can still live on the property.
Or son.
Or son, yeah, someone.
Yeah, I don't know why they call them mother-in-law suites.
The mother-in-law would always move in.
Some teenagers.
The idea would be that, you know, you could have some of these garages or if somebody didn't have a garage, they could build, and I think that's just one part of this. They could build a second, either transform their garage or build, instead of a garage, build a second structure. build a second structure, not necessarily, you know, in essentially a tiny home in the back of their property that's detached, so it's not an addition to their house, to allow for a mother-in-law type suite. That's part of what the idea is as well, not just.
Versus just a subdivision?
Correct. Now, there, from from my conversations with with Terry, it was more of accessory dwellings on a on a property. So if you have a single-family home, and you have room in your backyard, you could add one of these smaller homes as a mother-in-law suite, because currently, we don't allow that.
Yeah, if I may through the chair, that's correct. Right now, it's one house, one lot, and by allowing accessory dwelling units, you can actually have more than one living, more than one house on a property.
But that's why they want instruction and direction from council on, is this something we would like to see, and what would, how would we like to see it structured? So for for example, I know, I know there's there's a, there's actually, there's a home in Southfield that that, I think it's a historic home, on just on Southfield Road, in that, right behind that CBS, on Southfield Road and Ten Mile, that they have, they advertise as a, they have a mother-in-law suite, which this is really just like an addition, that they built a little house on this, as an addition to a home. But sometimes, you don't either have the square footage, or you have an existing garage that maybe you want to convert into another use than a garage, where we don't allow, but something like this would allow that. Rather than a whole new addition, you can convert a garage, and it's less of a construction cost.
I personally don't think I'm in favor of something like that. I think I'm more in favor of an empty lot where maybe you could put a few tiny homes, or or small homes, or create a little subdivision. It's real interesting, in Detroit, off of the Lodge, I wish I could remember the name of it, they've got a really cute area, and I mean, the uniqueness of these tiny homes, I mean, they're they're beautiful. I mean, I could see creating something like that, but, you know, to create a home in your backyard or in your garage, I mean, to me, that's going to create a mess in the city, and I'm not in favor of that at all. I would be in favor of a smaller home on a separate parcel, but, you know, not converting the garages, not converting, I mean, you have to have a large lot. I'm just thinking of my lot. I can't even imagine building a home back there. I mean, we have a shed. Are you saying that my shed could be converted if I put a bathroom and everything into a home? I mean, then everyone's going to have all their sheds? I mean, technically, we have a nice shed, could be a tiny home.
A she-shed.
A what? We don't want that in our city, no, I mean, no, that's my opinion. No, I'm not in favor of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, we have a number of lots in the city that are one and two acres.
Yes.
They originally were, I think, designed as, back in the twenties, as truck farm lots, where you had your house, and then you could till the backyard. So this is, this is an example of where those mother-in-law, or father-in-law, whatever you want to call them, grandmother's house could go. A couple of years ago, when M M L was in Grand Rapids, I took the housing strand, and the point was density. Building, using existing space so things are more walkable, that maybe you don't need a car, or totally car-reliant. And we visited a small house neighborhood. It was really very, very nice, and they were clustered together, and, you know, charming. This is not for everybody. As Planner Spence mentioned a couple of years ago, the greenhouse on Norwood, the developer there wanted to have small houses, and then would be for people that were interested in using the greenhouse to grow their own food. And again, that's not for everybody. Unfortunately, some of the people in the council at the time didn't get, didn't quite get the concept, so it didn't happen. But you just saw the presentation on reuse of mile roads and rezoning, so very possibly, there are lots on mile roads that could be turned into small, tiny homes. And, you know, totally, I think I agree. We don't want this in the middle of a neighborhood with four, a four and five-bedroom homes, and you're going to stick a tiny home. I know I would object if if that happened in my neighborhood, but, you know, an interesting thing happened at last Thursday night State of the City address. There was a young woman in back of the chambers here, and afterwards, we had a Q and A, and she's a student at Lawrence Tech, and she said, what are you doing about density? I don't have a car, I live on campus, and I have to, you know, I have to walk everywhere. I mean, we do have the bike program, but that's not always feasible, especially when weather's not conducive. And, you know, her point was, if things were closer, and there's something called the 15-minute neighborhood, where you don't have to walk any more than 15 minutes to virtually get everything you need. And that's that's part of the thinking behind this increased density. Also, at that M M L conference, we visited live workspaces, where people had their studio or their office on the first floor, and they lived above, which used to be very, very common in this country. And then we zoned everything, so you, you know, you had to live over here and work over here, and and we kind of lost that. So, you know, again, what we're seeing is at Northland is mixed use, retail with living above. And personally, I'm very supportive of that. So I I think this is the direction our planning department is suggesting we go, but what's ever appropriate. And I think we need to discuss this more, and, you know, see where it takes us.
Counselman Frazier?
Yeah, kind of adding on to what the mayor was talking about. Over the period of years, every once in a while, we get a an odd-shaped piece of property that's unbuildable because it's not large enough for a a home, and we try and encourage the adjacent people to either split it so they make their yard larger, or or one person to buy it to make their yard really large. Those are the kind of places where you could put a tiny home. Also, there are so many people that live in mobile home parks, and those, the square foot of those mobile homes aren't any any larger than what we're talking about with the tiny homes. Maybe one of the places is on South Telegraph, where we used to have the the park, Mobile Home Park, and I don't know if it got rezoned or not, you know, Mr. Spence?
The the Mobile Home Park on Telegraph?
Yes.
Um, I don't recall if there was a rezoning that took place, but there is some activity happening on that site now for redevelopment.
Sturridge?
I'm sorry?
But we could, we could probably find some space in in Southfield for clustering a few of those tiny homes. One other thing, if you have a piece of property that you can put a tiny home in your backyard, is that going to change the setbacks? Are you going to have two setbacks, one for the house and one for the tiny home?
I would think that, yes, we would have to take a look at that. Right now, accessory structures can be as close as three feet to a property line, and I don't know if we would want a dwelling unit that close to a property line. So we may have to set up a secondary set of setbacks for an accessory structure on the property that would be the actual living unit. That's something we could take a look at as well.
Well, if it's a living unit, wouldn't it have to have its own address?
Good question. I don't have an answer for you on that one.
Well, these are the kind of things we need to think about when we're talking about this kind of thing, so that if we do decide to go forward, we've thought our way all the way through what potholes we're going to fall in if we don't do it right.
Yes, correct, sir.
So, okay, let's.
Counsel, any other questions? Counselman Brightwell?
Jeff, just the, I think we've been touching on this briefly, a minute ago, a few minutes ago, I was using the term texture of a neighborhood. I meant to say the character.
Yes, I think that's what you meant, yeah.
Yeah, I figured you knew what I was talking about. So I think that's what we've been addressing, so you will get back to us. So if we start doing this, it'd be non-discriminatory with respect to why certain areas are are allowable for tiny homes, and others are not, you know, and I definitely don't want to destroy the character of any neighborhoods or any section of town.
Okay, so again, if it's if it's council's direction that you want us to to take a look further at tiny homes with a potential to, for a tax amendment in the future, we just need a yea or nay.
I'd like to ask, we should, I think, have more questions, so I think we need more discussion, not only about the address, but taxability on the property, how would it be taxed entrance, you know, will it be the same driveway as the, if you put it on to, you know, like, which I'm not in favor of doing garages. I totally agree with you on that, Nancy. I would not agree with that at all. But if that was on somebody that had an extra lot or something, and, you know, like, the small parcels that we ask other residents to purchase, and maybe they want to put a home there, wouldn't that have to have their, or should it have its own entrance, its own driveway, or what have you, to that door? And then how would it be taxed? What about utilities and all that kind of stuff? We have to have permits pulled, and I just think we need to have answers to all those kinds of things, so, but I'm in favor of tiny homes, period. I think we should do like we do the trailer parks, have maybe a tiny home location or something like that. I I think they're beautiful, and I think that there's a place for it. So I would be in favor of planning moving forward with something, but I think we should answer those other questions, too.
Got it, understood.
Counsel, any other questions? So will will planning come back with some additional information before coming through with an entire?
Yeah, correct. I did write down the concerns that there with regard to separate addresses and sizes and taxes. Yeah, I think those are very valid questions.
And water connections, you know?
I'm sorry?
Water connections, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're up to the council portion of the meeting. We'll start with Counselman Frazier.
Each each meeting, somebody from the council comes up with a piece of information that nobody ever heard of, and I always feel left out, so tonight I have mine. Today is the 50th anniversary of the first cellphone call that was in New York City. So the proliferation of cellphones now started with a cellphone that you could only have, I think it was like 30 minutes of battery time, and just a few numbers stored in the in the cellphone, so we've come a long way. I don't know if we're better off or not. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Counselman Banks?
Thank you. Is it possible that we can get an updated report on where we stand with the deer situation in Southfield? I know we had it on the ballot, and I believe the voters in Southfield approve doing something, and I'm receiving calls, what are we doing? And I don't know how to answer the question. And just this past week, you know, now that the weather is nice, we're starting to walk a lot more outside, and I'm just shocked at the number of deer that are out there during the daytime. And the other day, I thought they were going to come and try to walk with us or whatever. As fast as we were walking, they were coming closer to us, so it's kind of scary. And we're not talking one or two, we're talking, you know, I saw a herd of six, a herd of 10, and they're just out and about in the daytime. I thought basically deers came out at nighttime, but they're all over the city, so we could get a report on that, so I can know how to answer the questions. Also, the monarch butterflies have been brought up at several of our meetings, and I don't know if there's any type of special plant that residents can plant or flower. I guess I haven't done much much research on monarch butterflies. I know I love butterflies, but is there any way we could research, is there something that residents can put in their backyard to attract the the butterflies? So if someone could get back with us at a later time, I'm not looking for an answer right now. And then also, can we get an update on the Reynolds Building at a future date? And that can just be an email to council. I'm just curious what's happening with that particular building. And then last, I'd like to, you know, the holiday season is approaching us, and for those who celebrate Passover, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Passover, and also Easter. Orthodox Easter is this Sunday, and the following Sunday is Greek Easter, so happy Easter to everyone, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselman Cruz?
Mr. President, I have nothing to say.
All right, thank you. Counselwoman Taylor?
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to D P W. They worked very hard in picking up the branches that were out, and we had lots and lots and lots of calls. Due to the weather, it took a little longer, and today is the first day of the regular branch, tree, limb, and all that kind of pickup anyway, but I just wanted to say a special thank you because they worked very hard over the last month, actually, even on weekends, so I do want to say thank you to that. I also want you to know that April is the International Jazz Month. I happen to love jazz, smooth jazz is my favorite, but take a little time out to enjoy some jazz, listen to something that you're familiar with, or something new that you haven't heard. And again, I just wanted to just say thank you to all of our police and fire as well, because they've worked extra hard this past couple of months as doing, due to the weather and other things, so I just wanted to acknowledge all the hard work and say thank you.
Thank you. Counselman Brightwell?
Yeah, I just want to recognize, Mr. Frazier, he's a retiree from the phone company, so I would definitely assume he he drew upon his knowledge about the cellphone, and and I recall, and I recall when I worked for the phone company, I would, I could go to conferences, and and I would have a mobile telephone, compliments of my employer, but it was much bigger than what we have today, huge, and I felt embarrassed to carry it, really, but.
Yeah, it was.
But otherwise, I want to reach out to all veterans and and the citizens of Southfield. Please continue to stay safe. Thank you.
Counselman Hoag?
Just one thing, I want to congratulate the mayor and thank the citizens who came out last Thursday for the State of the City. We had another great presentation and good question-and-answer session, and so just want to thank both the mayor and the citizens. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to wish everyone a happy Easter, happy Passover, make sure to take some time to spend with your family and friends. I am going to put our interim building official on the spot here. Do you want to speak to the? Do you want to speak to the news about the online permitting system? That will be effective in a few months? If that's what happens when you stick around too long.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. So, yeah, with, with the help of a great staff that I came across a few months ago and dealing with Mr. Mannion, the building department is going to be going completely digital, no more paperwork coming in, no more telephone calls for inspections. All of this is supposed to happen by the 30th of June. We're introducing it slowly, but we've had a great response. A lot of people are actually doing it already.
And so the, so developers or homeowners who need to pull permits, already aware?
Yes, there's, there's signage in the building department at the counter and there's something on our website already, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, several things. First of all, you asked about the Reynolds Building. Several offers have been made. The owner has accepted the offer and then backed out. This has happened three, four times. That's all I can say. But the building is getting worse and worse. There are more broken windows. People have continued to break in there and vandalize the building. Then regarding the deer, as you know, sixty-two percent of Southfield residents voted to, in favor of culling the herd. I think where we're at, and the city administrator has mentioned to me that when we get to the budget discussions this spring about earmarking some funds for possibly a cull, but it's going to be challenging because deer do not respect municipal boundaries. And then there's the question of how do we undertake such a, a proposition? Years ago, the DNR told us that we could, they would allow a bow and arrow hunt in January in nature preserves, golf courses. At one time, Plum Hollow was considering that. So I, I think we have been in discussion and maybe our deputy city administrator can add more because he's the liaison to the Wildlife Committee, but we have been in discussions with Farmington Hills. Many of their residents face the same complaints that we do. I deal with Florida Deputy City Administrator, but I have something else yet to say, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor is correct. Just to remind council, the Southfield Wildlife Advisory Commission is tasked to report to council every year in June. And they are preparing a report with recommendations for presentation at council if that will be sufficient.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about, I was really pleased to see this article in today's Detroit News. I've maintained for a long time that Act 51 doesn't work. This is where we get local road dollars. It's a share of the gas tax and our car registration fees. Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne County are donor counties. We have more cars and yet the, the fees that come off license plates is split evenly with every county in the state. Secondly, although this article fixates on, on Macomb County, but it's the same thing here. You know, they, they talk about Mound Road or Van Dyke. Under Act 51, they do not distinguish between multi-lane roads, the two-lane roads. Out in front here, we have a four-lane road plus we have roundabout, you know, turnarounds. That's all on our dime to maintain. So this is something we've talked about with our three state reps, as well as our state senator, when we met with them last fall. But I, I'm really, really encouraged to see this in the newspaper because the problem is only getting worse. With electric vehicles, more fuel-efficient cars, there's less gas tax revenue. And that, you know, without doing something with Act 51, which dates back to 1951, this problem is just going to continue. And we all hear, all of us, about my neighborhood streets and when are you going to get to it? So I, I encourage you to read the article. It's really quite good. And then I added, with the help of our budget director, Austin Michaels, our state chair of revenue profile on the back. So we have good news this year, that this is the highest it's been for some time at $9.3 million. But again, one lane of concrete is over a million dollars. One lane, not one road a mile. One mile lane is a million, so it doesn't go very far, does it? So anyhow, I'm encouraged by this and let's hope that the new shift in the legislature will bring us some adjustments to this. If they do something about Act 51, obviously, there's going to be pushback. The donors are, because we have more cars in the tri-county area, the donors, if the donors get, in other words, Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb Counties get more money, then the outstate will probably not get as much. And so, I mean, I can see a struggle here, but anyhow, it's a very good article and the first time I've, I've seen this addressed in the media. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Deputy City Administrator?
Good evening. We still have the project finalization agreement for Miller Park. I've asked Parks and Recreation to have someone step up to answer any additional questions. I know we've had some discussion on that.
Council, do you have any, any other questions or any questions specific to this item?
To specific to what?
To this, to the item for the project finalization agreement for Miller Park.
Oh, no.
And Sims Park.
Thank you.
Counsel, no questions from council?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We just need a, a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize or approve the authorization to enter into the project finalization agreement for Miller Park renovation.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the authorization to enter a project finalization agreement for the Miller Park renovations as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening. I have nothing further to say except happy holidays, everyone.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Nothing. I did not know that it was International Jazz Week, so I encourage you to listen to Miles Davis, Mod's Blues, and maybe my other favorite right now is Kate Birdie and Boos. Neither of them are very bluesy, but for some reason, their name, that does make me happy.
Thank you. Anything additional from our city planner?
I have nothing more this evening. Thank you.
Okay. We already made our schedule. Any additional items need to come before the council? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.